Out of executive session. Welcome to the school board meeting. Kim is out of town today and asked, I'm sorry.
No, Kim, that's Kim.
Kim is out of town, the chairman, so she's asked me to conduct today. So we're out of executive session. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All second.
Give it to Kim. All in favor, fifty?
Aye.
Aye, Kim?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Moving on to reports, superintendent reports. The school spotlight for Initial Point High School, Principal Miller.
Thanks for giving us a chance to speak for a minute. My whole goal is to not take up too much of your time, but just give us some highlights of what we're doing. We've got one student here, one student should be here any minute, had to get off of work and then head over here. So might change around the order of the things that we do. And I'll go over the highlights, kind of looking forward, and then have them give you a few minutes and ask any questions they may have. So Troy, maybe you could go one more, please. So a few things we've really focused on this year. In the past, we didn't have a very, very good structured MTSS program for our students. So that's one thing we started off doing, that we meet every Friday and we visit about our students where they're at, what they need, how we can help them, how we can support them. And to be able to get our students through and through the classes and credits a little bit quicker and better. We've worked through our accreditation process, we had our visit a week and a half ago. Everything looks good, we should be accredited for the next seven years, so don't have to worry about that for a while again, which would be nice. Something new for our school this year is for the first time that we've had access to an instructional coach on school grounds. So I've worked with her really closely. It's demographic to help us set up all the PD for the year. So we've done PD through Boise State on trauma training. We've done some through Marzano Institute on, oh, I can't remember what it was called now, but it's more about trauma training, the things our students go through and ways we can help them. And then we've also put in place a new contract system for our students. So they come in on a contract of things that they'll adhere to. And if they're really struggling, whether it's academically or behaviorally, we have another set of contract we put them on to give them even less wiggle room so they know what they have to follow to be there with us. So those are the big things we've tackled this year. Looking forward a little bit to next year. We've done some school visits this year as a staff and gone to other alternative schools in the area. And most of them are doing mastery-based learning, which is it's not necessarily about how long it takes a kid to get it, as long as they get it. So some will get things faster than others, some will take longer. So putting a mastery-based system in place where we know if they've gone through these standards, then they're ready to move on to the next course. So we're going to be implementing some of that next year, not all the way across, but moving towards that so we can move it all the way across. So we've had these good discussions with Synergy and bringing them along with their mastery-based and making some sort of a six through twelve mastery-based school choice for our students. So there's students that, Bryson's one. Bryson, and he'll tell you a little bit about his story, but Bryson's one where I could probably put him into a class and even though he has to sit there for sixty hours, probably in about thirty or thirty-five hours, he would know everything he needs to know. And so have a system like that where he can move through as quickly as he can by still understanding the standards that he needs to get through. So we want to have a six through twelve program that does that for our students. Next year, we'll put on a court student court system, this is for our attendance court mainly. Right now, students have too many absences, they appeal to us as teachers. We want to have a student court as part of that as well, so our students get some say in what's happening as well. It's not just us as adults saying everything, but they have some buying as well. We've been working on our IPHS graduate intake because it's different than a lot of schools, what our graduate looks like and what the students come in looking like. So we're going to get those all hammered out by next year so we can train our feeder schools, train other schools on the type of students that were wanting to come in and be successful with us and then what they'll look like when they're done. Any questions on that before I let you hear from the star of the show?
So the Synergy program at Fremont is what you're talking about?
Correct.
And is it the plan that you'll oversee that or someone else?
Both. Probably me will oversee that and so I'll oversee the six through twelve mastery program. Not sure what help I will have in that yet, I'll still try and work a lot of those things out.
So Synergy and Initial Point will be working together?
Working together.
Okay.
And there's different reasons for that. One of it is us looking at going to mastery where they're already trying to do mastery in their program. Plus, a few years ago, the rules for alternative schools changed a little bit on who qualifies. And so really, we could qualify probably ninety-five percent of the students at any high school or any middle school as an alternative school student. And what that does allows us tap into that different funding stream of alternative schools. So we can generate more dollars to make the programs better.
Okay, and then you said something about absences. What does that look like? Are you partnering with the student when they have absences? Is there like a discipline or what are you doing with that?
So according to state rule, I can remember, I never remember if it's a rule or law. They're supposed to be in attendance ninety percent of the time.
Okay.
So in our system, any more than four absences, they should lose credit on that. So we have a petition process, they write up the reasons for it. They can do that once and depending on the reasons, will they grant credit or will have them come in for extra intervention on Fridays or make a deal as long as you're not over your absences for the next grading period, we'll grant credit. They do that the second time, they currently come in and present their case to our staff. And then the staff decides. So we want to bring students into that group as well because students have a big say in what's going on.
They're pointing to the camera.
Yeah. Other questions or should I let you talk to Brian, talk to, sorry, Bryson?
Well, I don't necessarily have anything prepared, but I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have, Jim.
Tell a little bit about what, because Bryson came to us this year.
Yes, this is my first year at Initial Point. See, I came over here mainly because it was kind of hard fighting for attention for teachers with thirty to forty-plus kids in the classroom. It was just kind of a battle. I was very, I was struggling. I, see, I failed math three years now. And so I was looking for extra help and I found it.
And can you tell us a little bit about what that help looks like?
So so far, anytime that I've actually asked a teacher, hey, could you come over here? Could you come visit me or stop by, I would get the chance, they've came, visited and explained things to me.
So you get the one-on-one?
Yeah, mainly. That's mainly what I was looking for, is the one-on-one side and being able to get it explained to me without competing.
Bryson was one of our, sorry, he was also one of our guinea pigs this year. We switched our schedule around a little bit, he was pretty involved in the career tech options at the other schools. So we were able to switch our schedule enough that he was able to work. We worked with Stuart to get him and one other student in so they can still take those certification courses while going to Initial Point.
So do you feel like Initial Point has helped with your education as far as improving?
My grades have been this entire year.
Well, thirty to forty kids in a classroom is not helpful?
I've seen, I've seen some really good kids that I've known over the years that have struggled at the high school and transferred to Initial Point. And one of them last year was a Val Victorian. And I've asked those kids, what's the difference? And what I get from the students is it's the class sizes. Where you guys have a personal relationship with the teachers and you feel like the teachers are on board with you and they care. And I feel like the students have that relationship and they don't want to let their teachers down. And they do really well. And it's amazing, it's amazing to see the transition and it's awesome. I'm proud of what Initial Point's done and what you guys have been able to accomplish there. Do you feel like, do you feel like that's true?
Yeah, I would very much vouch for that. Students as a whole have been progressing in their curriculum very efficiently.
Have you felt the difference between the, with the mastery-based program? The change to mastery versus what a traditional, I guess?
Well, I, I used to go to KHS, so I was kind of already used to the mastery or, sorry, the extra credit. Sorry.
So I just, so did you mean you went to KMS, like to Kuna Middle School before or?
Kuna High School.
Oh, Kuna High School.
I spent two years there.
Okay. So have you noticed a difference in the new program that I think your principal's talking about going to mastery-based versus like a traditional grading system, like a one, two, three, four? Is that what I'm, am I understanding?
I'm not sure how much he's, he realizes what we're doing. Because right now, we have teachers down leaning in it.
Okay.
Not going fully in board yet, that big change happened in the fall.
Okay. Got it, sorry.
But it's kind of like right now, if somebody like Bryson was caught up in everything and had no, no, no further to go in any of his classes, he'd get all As and Bs. There might be a day where he takes off and leaves and doesn't have to come back because what's the reason to sit in a classroom when you have nothing to do?
Sure. So what would you say one thing would be able to improve at Kuna High School?
I'd say the class sizes and the order operation.
And what are your plans when you graduate?
At the moment, I'm going to take a year off, work a little bit and then look for college that I like.
So Initial Point is not just for behavioral kids?
No. No, I would say students that have behavior issues at Kuna High or anywhere else that come to us, don't stay with us very long because they, just changing to school doesn't change their behavior. They have to determine, they have to decide to change that themselves and we will support them, help them. So they either changes or they go somewhere else.
Well, I like that because there are some kids who learn differently and so they have options.
Yeah. That's what we're here for, school of choice. Any other questions we can answer for you?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming. Okay. Director Gifford, can you talk to us about the student learning pillars?
Yes, thank you. Trustees, I'm excited to share this with you. This is an update on the student learning pillar and this is data from the mid-year check-in, specifically math. We're going to focus on math because I know that's been a question for him, so I'm sure he's excited to see it.
Well, he just said he struggled with math.
He did.
He's down for years, so, yes.
So what I'm going to share with you, we're going to look at data from our iReady, which is our curriculum that we use. We've been using it with K five for about five years now and this year we added sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. We'll look at that data first. We'll look at, for all of this data, we'll look at the beginning of the year fall benchmark test, which is the diagnostic test for the beginning of the year and then we'll look at the mid-year winter diagnostics. So we'll look at that data. And then we'll, then we'll look at just secondary data, sixth through twelfth grade from what's called the CICA, which stands for shortened, short-term, shortened interim comprehensive assessment. So it's basically a practice test of the ISAT, it's a shorter version of the ISAT. And that's new to us to be looking at that data. So this gives you just big picture, this is all of our K eight students. In, in all of these graphs with iReady that I'm going to show you, there's going to be two shades of green, sun yellow, and then two shades of the red. The green is the target, that's at grade level, either early or mid or above grade level. The yellow means that you're somewhere in that one grade level below. And then the two shades of red are two or three grade levels below. This is the beginning of the school year in the fall. We had about twenty percent of our students who were at proficiency on that initial test. And we had about twenty-eight percent that were at the other end, two or three grades below. When we did this again in the winter in January, we doubled the students of proficiency up to forty percent. We reduced from twenty-eight to twenty percent of our students that were two or three grade levels below and then of course, one below also diminished. So that's just the big picture data and that's how this data will work. But let's break it down, I'll show you grades, each grade one at a time. On this, you'll notice in kindergarten, there's no red. Our kindergarten teachers are wonderful, but it's because there's no such thing as two or three grade levels below kindergarten. But my, when I was the principal, kindergarten teachers always loved to point out that there was no red. What I think you can see quickly here as you look across is that fall to winter, there is that increase that we're looking for. And the decrease in the two to three grade levels below. That's the pattern that we're looking for. Overall, the total percentage of students, anywhere from that thirty-four to, what is that, fifty-one percent? So that's, that's K five again, they've been using this system for a while. This year, we added sixth, seventh, eighth. So you can see that the pattern is the same. You know, you've grown from fall to winter and decreased from fall to winter in the red, but the overall percentages aren't quite as high as K five. So what this data so far tells me is that we're making growth, we're moving in the right direction. But I also wanted to give you some context of where our district is compared to the rest of the state and to the rest of the country in this same program. So these next slides will do that for you. This is the whole district. Over here on your left, this is the norm year. So in eighteen, nineteen, pre-COVID, the, this became the baseline scores for all of the testing until now. They're actually in the re-norming year now for the Ready Test. This is how the country is performing this year. This is how Idaho is performing this year and this is how our district has performed this year. So as you look at that, we're pretty similar to how the rest of the state is performing on this test. We're ahead of where the country is performing on this test. And we're about back to where we were pre-COVID. That's again, big picture, all K eight students in one graphic. Then again, we'll break it down by grade level for you so you can see where we fall. So again, this was the norm year, pre-COVID. This is the country this year, state this year, Kuna this year. So as you look at each grade level, you can see we're either slightly ahead of the state or about where the state's at, or maybe even a little behind the state. But in all of these grade levels, we're ahead of where the country is. And we're about back again to where we were pre-COVID. There are obviously some minor differences here and there. Three, four, five, similar story. Again, about where the state is, ahead of the country, about where the state is, ahead of the country, same thing here. And almost back to where we were, about where we were pre-COVID. Six, seven, eight, not quite as good of data yet, but similar. So we're a little bit behind the state, ahead of the country, about back to COVID once. A little behind the state, ahead of the country, you see that same pattern, six through eight. So I wanted to give you that context because clearly we're growing in our data, we're making progress. But this puts it in context of how we're doing compared to the rest of Idaho and the country. So the struggle in math isn't just a unique thing to Kuna. And what we're doing is moving the needle at this point. So I'm proud of the work that we're doing, we clearly have more work we need to keep doing. Any questions on that iReady data before I go on to the CICA data? Kind of fun to say. Okay. So with the CICA, like I said, this is an interim assessment, so it's, it's a shorter version of the ISAT. They, Kuna Middle School started doing this last year, so this is their second year using this data. Fremont started it this year and the high school started it this year. With the high school in particular, one of the interesting things with this, in high school, we didn't have like a common benchmark assessment we could use very well. They used to look at the SAT data when everyone took it. Now that it's optional, that data is not very helpful because we don't have data for everybody. So they've relied mainly on their unit testing, their, the data that they're collecting within the classes. So this year, at the high school especially, starting with the CICA, now they're looking at all of the curriculum, nine through twelve. And what's unique about the high school in particular is that their test, while you might have Math one and then Math two and then, I don't even know the course names exactly, three and four, it just goes sequentially. But the content they cover is spread across all grade levels. And so as a ninth grader going and taking the CICA, you're going to do material from all of those grade level areas. So it's a little bit unique for high school, it's a bit of a challenge to look at that data, but they were wanting to do that this year and get that idea of where we're at. So we're going to start with the middle school though. This is Fremont's data. So similar to the other one, instead of the two shades of green, now there's a blue. Blue is the above grade level, green is at, this is approaching, this is below. You can see for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, at the beginning of the year on benchmark number one, we had twenty-three percent of our students in sixth grade that were at the proficient level, twenty-five percent and twelve percent. Not where we want to be clearly. But then when you look, when they took benchmark two in February, the sixth grade increased by six percent. They have twenty-nine percent of their students, thirteen percent increase at seventh grade and a fourteen percent increase at eighth grade. So now we're at twenty-nine, thirty-eight, twenty-six percent of our students that were proficient on this interim. And then I put where the state average was, so you can see that. So our sixth graders, even though they're still not where we want them to be, they were ahead of the state average. Same thing in seventh grade and we were at the average for eighth grade. Okay, so Fremont did benchmark one and two. Now here's, here's like the bright spot. Kuna Middle School, they did three of the benchmarks, so benchmark three is their most recent one. So that's why it's got three up here and this looks a little different because it's benchmark three instead of two. At the beginning of the year, here's where their proficiency levels were, twenty-three percent, twenty-three and twelve. And then you'll jump over here to see their increase in February. They increased by twenty percent, almost doubled the number of students. Forty-three percent of their students were showing proficient in sixth grade in February. Thirty-eight percent, an increase of fifteen. And then the eighth grade started low, but they tripled to thirty-six percent of their students at the proficiency level. And then compared to where the state is, in all three grade levels, they're performing ahead of where the state is at. So again, this is not where we want to stay, but this data shows we're doing the right work, we're getting kids moving. And I also have to give a shout out to trustee Bruce, the tutor.com, Kuna Middle School is the one that uses it the most. So you can also see that in here. Most of our hours have been used by our Kuna Middle School students, so kudos to them.
So it's working?
It's working, yes. So now high school, this is quite a bit lower. But again, like I talked about, ninth graders are taking a test that covers material all the way through eleventh grade, twelfth grade. So starting at quite a bit of a lower point, increase of eleven percent, ten percent, and thirteen percent. So now we're at fifteen, fifteen to twenty, which again, is still low. And it's slightly lower than where the state is at. So we have more work to do on this, but like I was explaining initially, high school hasn't looked at this kind of data before. So this will be important for them to look at this data and use this data to help drive it. In fact, when they got this first step back, we talked about the idea, Mr. Rito, correct me if I'm wrong, we talked about the idea, there's other interim tests that are called block assessments that focus just on skills, specific skills. And we thought maybe we would do that kind of testing because then the teacher that teaches that skill could focus on that test. But ultimately, we decided, or the math department decided, they want to do this one again because they need to see that growth, they need to know where the gaps are so they can focus on that in their individual courses. So kudos to them for continuing on with it. Again, good growth and progress, still not where we want to be, but we're starting to move the needle, it's the work we need to do. So we're going to keep going on that work.
Is this assessment for all grade levels at the high school or just the eleventh grade?
This is, so this was the ninth grade scores, tenth grade and eleventh grade. But the test covers material across all those grade level bands.
Okay. Well, I mean, would, it would make sense that ninth and tenth are going to be lower since it's eleventh grade work.
Yes.
But they improved.
They did improve. Yeah, I mean, by twelve, eleventh grade, and I don't know, these eleventh graders, it's the first time they've taken it. So it'll be interesting to see what happens with these ninth graders each year as we continue down this path.
Director Gifford?
Yes.
First, I want to say good job on getting those scores up. But secondly, we need to continue and I think you realize that too. What are some programs that you have found are really, have helped a lot? In other words, is it our curriculum? Is it the one-on-one? Is it a, what programs do you feel are really making this successful?
Well, I think at the, especially at the middle school level, because Ready Math is new for them. That's reinvigorated the math instruction, it's caused them to look at how they're teaching, what they're teaching, the pacing, every, it's had them look at everything. And it also includes a component called My Path that continues to diagnose kids each month as they do their continuous testing. And it gives teachers specific recommendations on what needs to be taught to fill in those gaps. So I think it's partly the curriculum, but I have to give the credit, the teachers are working their tails off to implement it with fidelity. And you know, it's been hard on kids and the parents too. There's been some unhappiness about the change because they, they've doubled the amount of instructional time they're doing, which is hard because it sometimes takes away some of the other options they had. So I've heard that too, but I think it's that combination of hard work and looking at the curriculum differently and that new curriculum has kind of reinvigorated it. At the high school, I think this was kind of like an aha realization that not so much they need to change what they're doing, but they need to change how they're looking at that data and using that data to drive what they do in the individual classes. Because this data doesn't align necessarily just to one class, but they're going to have to, they've been looking at this data figuring out how to utilize it better. At the elementary level, because they've been using that curriculum for a while now, I think it's just about honing in their practices. I know that elementary is focused more on their common formative assessments, which are outside of this, but really drive that specific day-to-day instruction. So I think everyone's trying to focus on it in different ways, but the end result is to move the needle on student learning. I probably rambled too much for you, Kim, but is that, did that answer your question?
Yeah, it does, I just want to know what kind of best practices we've been using. We do have a long ways to go at the high school though, but sometimes I look at the COVID kids that are going through and realize they missed some one-on-one instruction.
Yeah.
And where have they doubled instructional time for math?
At the middle school, that was part of their schedule this year.
Just KMS or both?
KMS doubled it for everybody. Fremont had it based on need, I believe. Because they had their win time, which elementary also does. So Fremont had the win time, Kuna Middle School went to what they called academic extension. So every student had some extra time. And at Fremont, they targeted kids that needed it.
And another question, on the previous data with the iReady, is that a, from the, from the fall to winter, the growth, is that, how does that compare to years past? You know, are we doing better growth? Is it kind of a standard growth amount?
That is a really good question, I'm trying to think off the top of my head. My gut reaction is it's a little bit better than it has been, especially after COVID. Because after COVID, everybody's growth kind of stymied a bit. So it has been picking up over the last couple of years. I could, I could get that specific for you, but yes, I think overall, it's a bigger growth than it has been in the past.
Yeah, I think that's kind of help, that would be helpful data for, and not necessarily for this necessarily, but maybe for future type benchmarks.
Yeah, we can do like a year to year to see where that growth has come. Yeah, today, I really just wanted to see you, because I know we talked about this year, what, what's happening this year and where we stand. So yeah, but that is good, I can look for that.
So at the high school, is every teacher doing this or is it just certain teachers?
Yeah, this was all eleventh grade, all ninth, tenth, and eleventh graders took this test. Yeah. Yep. And the nice thing about this too, this is, this is probably a better predictor of how they will do on ISATs because because it's the same exact format, everything looks the same, it's just a shorter version of it. And so by focusing in on this, it should help us not only analyze where we're at teaching the standards and the content, but it should also give the students more opportunities to practice the way these questions are asked and how they have to answer them. Because that's a, you have to teach how to do the test too, unfortunately, in a testing world. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, I appreciate the time.
Thank you.
I do love this. I think this is super important for our, to recognize these types of
Yes.
the data and keep that proficiency at the front of our minds.
Right, I agree.
Okay, so moving on to celebrations and communications, Kuna Way Awards. Assistant Superintendent Kim Beckenbauer.
So Chairman Nixon and Assistant JD. I don't wanna address this, she's not there. So anyway, Kuna Way Awards, these are great. It's so much, it's so nice to be able to celebrate people doing some great stuff around here. And so, and I know you have this in front of you, and so I'm just gonna click through these people that were chosen for Kuna Way Awards this year. I love they have written little things at this one road. And this was this group of teachers were helping another teacher who was out, which is pretty cool, great teamwork there. And again, our maintenance and child nutrition team paired up to help get some work done. It's just nice, I guess, to see our people just work together to get it done. Cody with the Avid, and that was great. If you, we had the Avid showcase two weeks ago though, it was fabulous. And then of course, Michelle Tripp, led the whole thing, so. Did a fabulous, it was, it was wonderful. And that is, that is our Kuna Way. And I know there was more in your pile, but those are some of the ones that you just, thank you for signing those.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda.
I don't think I'll be talking on the end because I don't really talk. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, anything that we need to take out of there? Or discuss?
I was previously going to talk about the Hesene prohibition, but after some, I think we'll talk about that in the policy committee separately. So I think we're good.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Can I make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Do we have a second?
A second.
On favor?
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries, thank you. Okay, so moving on to delegations. Okay, Russell Johnson, you wanna come up? So we, we, so for delegations, we give you three minutes to speak to the board. And there won't be any decisions made tonight on what you're talking, but information for the board to hear. We appreciate you coming.
Sure, yeah, no, hey, thank you. Do I have to state my name, address and that kind of business, if I remember right?
Yeah.
Okay. Hey, thanks, thank you to the board and to the trustees and to the officers for allowing me to spend a few minutes here with you this evening. I'm kind of the northern fringe of the, of the school district. I'm in Canyon County, right across the line. And we've lived here about 17 years. And so, I've had two daughters go through the KSD district here and you all did a fabulous job and I thank you for that. They're doing great things. I'm here tonight to, to visit with you real quick about kind of an optic, an optics issue that, that has kind of surfaced with, with the number of residents over on that neck of the, of the school district. I think we all know that, that growth developments, et cetera, have been pretty wild, I guess, the last, the last few years. And growth has impacted certainly the capacity of the KSD district. We, we have a, a proposal going in for a development over on that side of the dis, of your district that is gonna, if it's approved, will result in about 29 new homes. And of course, the families and the children that, okay. Okay. And I know that the, that the school district is approached by developers, by the Canyon County Commissioners, by the planners, by Ada County planners, by the state, all these different agencies for your support for the developments and your ability to handle the additional capacity of those developments if approved would generate to the, to the school district. And so, I think many of you received an email or was submitted through Sue Merstike recently. I didn't wanna bother you with all of another wheelload full of papers. But there's two letters in, in particular that, that I'm here to really express my concern with. One is a, a letter that, that the district submitted to the Canyon County Commissioners last September, recommending disapproval of a development because of capacity issues. Makes sense, wholeheartedly agree with you. The second letter is one in support of a subdivision. With very little mention of capacity, but mention of support to the Kuna School District in the form from the developer to be able to provide some opportunities for some students to be able to
13 seconds.
13 seconds?
Yes.
To be able to, to support that's the school district. So, what I'm asking the board to consider is a letter to the Board of Commissioners in Canyon County stating very clearly your capacity issues, okay?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Can we ask questions?
No.
And why not?
Because it is public comment and it is not open, there is no action to this discussion.
Right, but I feel like when I've read about the meeting, well, we can ask questions, we can't make any decisions.
You cannot with this.
Okay, can we ask that we put on a, a future agenda then?
In a different meeting, yes.
Yeah, so the next agenda, the next meeting?
We'll talk, we could talk about it after this meeting, yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so moving on to unfinished business. Consider authorizing May 21 supplemental levy election and resolution, Director Graves.
I thank you trustees, I'm gonna just say trustees because yeah, it is weird. I, I get to step in and replace Wendy for a couple of minutes for this, to not replace Wendy, but speak for her. And then Allison's gonna bail me out if I say anything incorrect or if I don't quite describe it correctly. The first unfinished business is to just review the May 21 supplemental levy that we talked about in February. So just in review, you guys voted to run a supplemental levy, May 21, for learning and safety and critical maintenance needs. It was decided to wait to run the bond election for additional learning spaces for an election date to be determined. This will provide us time.
I'm sorry, but I can't quite hear Brian.
Sorry, did?
Turn it off.
Great.
This provides the board time to decide what the next bond should include, more time to organize a citizen-run campaign and then provide some time to determine what may happen with Governor Little's infrastructure bill. That's just review kind of what we did last time. This again was that supplemental levy. 5.3 million over two years, 2.5 for the learning piece, the 2.8 for the critical maintenance, and those are shown here. We told you we would keep you updated. So February 13, we kind of talked about House Bill 521, or AKA Governor's Facility Bill. This was the review we had for you in February. The only addition we have to this is it's exactly the same at this point. Nothing has changed through the legislation. So we still don't know if this is gonna happen and then how it's gonna happen. So the guarantee of, hey, there's gonna be this facility's money, maybe we shouldn't ask for more. We don't have that for you, we don't have a guarantee by any means. We can say that our critical needs are just a month more critical. But that's the only thing we can say. But however, because this is still a conversation and because it's not a no at this point, we felt like maybe bringing you guys another, another option may be, may be interesting. And maybe that's why you guys get paid the big bucks, it's disgusting, we should do something different. So in comparison, we still have that decision you guys made in February. If you are a person that wanted to guarantee us that facility's money is gonna be here and it's gonna be here in a timely manner, two things that we thought could easily be taken off of this, roofs seems very facilities when we read through everything, and HVAC. For us, obviously, transportation, a bus is not facilities. The network and the fire alarm, we just could not find in, in what we've read that it would guarantee that that facility's money could be used for fire alarm or for the technology updates that we have to have. So we didn't feel comfortable taking those out just because we know, we listed those as critical, and they are critical. So this difference, as opposed to 10.6 total, 5.3, over the two years, it would be 3.775 or 7.5. The next slide I may go to the audience. Because we're talking about taxes.
You've got Michael and, and
And both Michael and Eric and you're there to join me. So what we have is three slides or three different graphics. The first one is, I live in Kuna, this is what I have to pay in taxes. Elmira has this subtraction from House Bill 292, so the total is 6.3. My portion for every $100,000 of value of my home, I have to pay $123.61. That's what we're currently doing if you live in Kuna and you are a homeowner. Correct? We have that choice you guys made in February. Elmira did some estimations. Hopefully this is wrong and it's gonna be way more money, but 8.5 million would be what we owe. And so additional from 123, you're adding about $44 for every $100,000. If you trust our legislators and that money's gonna be here for facilities and we decide to take off the roofs and take off the HVAC because we can do those projects with that new money, hopefully, the difference would only be an additional 14 dollars. And I quickly, bad, I wanna hand it off to Mike, Michael and Eric if I, if you guys have any questions.
Well, so it's, even if they pass it, we don't know when they'll give us the money. It could be in a year, it could be in six months, it could be in two years.
So, that's correct. Like, even if it goes past this legislative session, if you think about how the bill is set up, they have to go for a bond. It's probably best case scenario, it's end of 2025, right? Then we're probably getting those, those funds. There's, there's some other requirements currently in the bill too, that the district would have to meet before you get access to those, those funds. And so, there are things to think about. So I think from a decision standpoint, right? I think when we were originally talking about the supplemental versus the bond, the reason why we included some of these capital projects in are that these were kind of critical projects, right? That needed to get done. And so I think, you know, as a, as a decision for the board is, you know, what's the timing for those critical bondments and how quickly do you wanna get going with this? Because, you know, if you do wait for those funds, it could still be a year, year and a half out before you're getting to those, those critical capital projects. And those other funds, I think you also have other needs, right? So, you know, if you kind of utilize the supplemental funds and take care of those critical needs now, roof repairs and those things, those other funds, right? If they do come through from, from the state can be shifted, right, to some of this other, you know, wealth-related challenges, right? The district is considering and have tabled for now, part of that being like, hey, look, if we get these funds, I could also hold on the bond side things, right? So, I think timing could definitely be a challenge here. It's uncertain how quickly we'll get access to those funds. And it's not gonna be that quick, would be my guess.
Unless it's not gonna be easy.
And there's gonna be some hoops. With anything with government, there's always some hoops you have to jump through in order to get the, get the funds.
I mean, I appreciate it, but I don't know if that's really a good decision. Because I know like the high school, for example, the HVAC is pretty messed up. And the kids are already 35, 40 kids in the classroom and it's like super hot, so that, that's a challenge. And I think Wendy said some of the roofs are pretty much, if they don't get fixed, they're gonna be condemned, so that's an issue.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear, is that Kirsty that was talking?
Yes.
And do, are you giving what you think? Is that what you're saying, your thoughts?
It's what we discussed last board meeting, about how the HVAC system at the high school needs to be replaced as soon as possible because it's already not working. And that we were discussing the roofs that need to be fixed or the buildings will not be workable.
I, my opinion, my opinion, sorry, Kim.
I'm sorry. So I guess my feelings are, as I've looked through this, is right now, if I'm correct, because of our levies previously, our, our taxpayers are paying about $123 per 100,000. By adding the, the orange or the, you know, orange one, the 10.5, the one that we want, I'm gonna call it the big shebang, then they'll be paying an extra 44.50 per that, per 100,000. Personally, I kind of like that idea because there's only a difference of about 2 million. And Brian, we have other projects needed for facilities, like Kirsty was saying. Not only HVAC, but we have roofs that need to be fixed, parking lots, am I correct?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, I, I have, the, the list that everyone allowed me, remember, we shortened our list to just critical. I, I could spend a lot more money if you let me on things that, that our principals would say, I don't know what word, just a little less than critical.
And it, and it's true, if we get that money from the state, that we can use it for some of those that are right below the critical line.
Absolutely.
I just, I feel like, go ahead.
Yeah, well, and, and there are a couple of different buckets of money, right, with the, with the 521 funds, if, if this passes. And passes in the current form that it's in. So, everyone remembers House Bill 292, we've got that up here already, we're being somewhat conservative, right, in terms of what that estimate is. You guys received 2.1 and that's because originally that bill passed, there was this assumption, right, that, you know, that, hey, we have four buckets of money that we're gonna take funds from, that's gonna go down in the first year with a long-term funding solution from, from sales tax, right, sales tax redistribution. If 521 passes, it also bolsters this money up here, right? So there's actually more money that would go into House Bill 292. So, you know, even if, you know, the, the board decides to go forward with, you know, the larger amount and 521 passes, right, there could be some additional tax offset that goes towards offsetting that, you know, that 5.3 million dollar levy and could provide long-term, you know, capital maintenance funding, which would take a little longer to, to get access to. So, there are a couple of pieces to kind of keep in mind on the tax rate side of it. So I think really we're attempting to kind of be a little bit conservative right here with kind of what that tax impact's.
So I mean, I feel like then the money from the, from House Bill 521 could, is a bit flexible, right? It could be used to offset a future bond, like maybe, which I think is in the future. So, I mean, putting that money towards reducing the future bond maybe seems a little bit more responsible than, than banking on it for the supplemental levy funds. And then we can decide then if we're using it for bond money or if we're just adding it to the critical make, you know, the long list of critical maintenance. Um, that would be my feeling to move forward with what we previously at the five point three million.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
My only negative is how the community would feel if they realize that they, we could have saved them, what, two point five million by taking off the roofs and the HVAC. And I, I guess that's the negative side I see and I just wanna make sure we're making the right decision.
Well, we can, we can always save them that in the bond.
I think it's whether we're saving now or saving in the future. We're, we'll be saving no matter what. If we get money, where it's less money, we're gonna ask, we're down the road.
Yeah, but if a school's gonna be condemned, then that wasn't fiscally responsible either.
Yeah, and just to chime in that. So one thing to keep in mind that like your ballot question is an up to amount, right? So just because the voters have approved five point three million and this passes and the board can make a different decision to not levy the full five point three million, right? So you're actually hedging your bets on that, right? To say like, okay, we're going forward with five point three, that's what's gonna go on the ballot if, right? We do get these funds and the board come back to decide, oh, hey, this is gonna be more money than we thought or we kind of have a better picture. But this looks like you can decide not to levy, right? Those, those funds at a time. Or you can levy it the first year, right? Because you need those critical projects, but then by the second year of the levy, you know, those funds are replacing, you don't levy them. So I think by positioning the district at that five point three doesn't mean that you have to actually certify that much.
Okay. Makes, makes a lot of sense. Any other questions?
Well, hopefully we can just communicate that to the voters that we're looking for places to save money. If we get money from the government, we're gonna put it to use to save taxpayers and do, and do the best for the schools. And so hopefully that message can be put outward.
And I like the way that you guys covered how this can be positive by going with the ten point six over the two years. Um, cause I think of things that we're gonna have to know to make sure that the voters know, um, out there.
That sounds worse than talking about one year. Do we have a motion?
I don't know if I'm gonna get this right, but I'm gonna make a motion to accept the supplemental levy for five point three million dollars.
I'm gonna name it Resolution A in total of ten point six.
Okay, Resolution A in the total of ten point six million.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor, Hillary?
Aye.
Aye. Kim?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Thanks for the clarification.
Michael, do you wanna stick? Cause I think it's the resolution language or anything.
Yes, until you wanna approve the fight title, um, the election resolution.
Do you have to say anything exactly?
Michael, do, do they have?
Yeah, that's the, I think that's the preference by all the truxels who lead the whole, whole title into the record.
Okay, so am I gonna start again when I just said I'm gonna read that? Okay, so we accept the resolution calling for supplemental levy election. Whereas in accordance with section thirty-three dash eight oh two-three Idaho code as amended, the board trustees of joint school district number three, Ada and Canyon County, state of Idaho, has determined there is a need for a supplemental levy in the amount of five point three million per year for two years for the purpose of paying all lawful expenses and maintaining and operating the district as further described below for the fiscal years beginning July first, twenty twenty-four and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Good job.
Okay.
This is what's gonna be on the ballot?
This is, yes.
Okay.
So do we have a second?
Michael's second.
Michael, you already did. Okay, all in favor, Hillary?
This is legally what we have to do, right? So sure, yeah.
Aye, Kim.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. All right, little tracker.
Do you wanna go ahead and click on the next slide? So part of one of the tasks you guys gave us was to try to find any restructuring, any reducing, anywhere we can, we can look at the services that we provide now professionally or, or other and try to find the best price and best product for the best price. So we're gonna, we're gonna bring forth three of them today. It doesn't mean we're done, but these are the three that we're ready for. Um, and again, I will go to the audience for some help on the third of these. Um, at the very end, this will be action. So you get to listen to me for a bit and then I'll, please, if you have any questions, that's what I'd rather do than answer it so I speak. So remember in January, February meetings, we shared to restructure our budget is to look for, um, change in the state funding and in one time federal funds. We reviewed three cost areas. This is where Elmira would be talking to you if, I swear Elmira and Wendy did this on purpose. They're on big case and they're burning here. But tonight we have proposals for the board to consider that could provide somewhere in the range of six hundred and nine hundred thousand dollars to cover expenses to the district. Uh, these proposals would be adopted in the twenty-four, twenty-five budget and kind of a foreshadowing of what you'll hear in April from Elmira. The first one is not the most exciting one, but it is a cost savings. Oh, I don't have the clicker. I keep looking, truly, sorry. Uh, our auditing services. Uh, in the past, we had gone with a company called Idae Bailey. Um, these three bids came back to us. Sometimes when you get the lowest bid, you, you definitely want to look and try to find another district and they can give us references. One of our friends from the west does work with Quest CPAs and they have nothing but good to say. Um, so it just felt like for us, our recommendation is accept the lowest bid cost proposal from Quest CPAs.
I just have a question. When I bid things, usually the first year, everybody has a great introductory bid and then we're, right after that, they're back to like, there's even whatever company is, you know, a little more apples to apples. So what is, what do they say about the future? Like, is that the average five percent annual inflation? Like, I'm not sure what that means. Like, what will it be next year? Is there a contract to keep the price where it's at for how long?
So I, I, we, we sign one-year contracts and then we can go out to bid again. Um, typically, there, there are times where one of our groups will actually ask us for a longer, um, relationship. That way we can keep, we can spread costs out. No, that group will talk about that a little bit later. Um, everything that Valley View School District told us is they've had a partnership with Quest for a long time and this is what they're paying and have been paying.
And what's the benefit of the hybrid versus just the virtual?
You get some stuff on site. Virtually, right now, Idae Bailey says hybrid. We, we provide all the information and, and all the meetings. Remember, they even actually presented, um, virtually as well.
So they're providing a virtual service anyway? Okay.
That's what we felt like could change, especially if I really was. And I'm kidding, speaking for Elmira, so I'm gonna use like one percent of the, of what I'm talking about. Yeah, so we provide the work for them. They ask us what to provide and what we will provide.
What does that mean, cost thirty thousand with average five percent annual inflation? Like, is it going up five percent next year? Is that what I'm wondering?
I would assume that's where.
That's what I think.
Yeah, that's how I would assume it as well.
So I'm assuming Elmira is okay with this company?
Yeah, this was the recommendation that she would have presented to you.
I make a motion that we accept Quest CPAs, um, for our auditing services.
I'll second that.
All in favor, Kirsty?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
I have trustee Load spoke about, this is for me probably the hardest one to ever predict, it's your health insurance. Um, our health benefits, um, as well as the consulting services. We use a third party, it's called the Murray Group, you're gonna see it, also called Accure because Accure has just merged and purchased the Murray Group. So it's the same company, I promise. I actually went to college with Chad Murray, that was way before he was hired here. But there are two proposals. The annual costs of consulting services is exactly the same. Literally, the, they're exactly the same for like the cost per employee, the annual. The, the only difference was Hub International uses what's called zero.
Net zero.
Net zero as potential savings. And it's worked out of state. There is one school district that uses Hub International, Twin Falls. And it sounds like they've used them for a while, so they said they were fine. We've used the Murray Group, Accure, at least two years. I've been here two years, probably five or six years. There is potential with the Murray Group to save a lot of money with the state going with our self-funding. Um, so we're researching that. That's where we believe we can get the most savings. The net zero really didn't seem like a plan that worked for our, in our insurance world. Uh, our recommendation is to stay with the Murray Group and continue to research and get to a place where we can use self-funding, which is where we see the biggest savings overall. Um, the potential of actually, this year if we would have been self-funded, we would have saved five hundred thousand dollars on health choices.
Can you tell us what the, what the consulting service does? Do they, you know, like if an employee is needing to utilize it, they, they help that employee? Or is it just like a broker that, that tries to get the best deal for health insurance for the state?
What you said, second, unless we were state funding, then they work more with the individual, excuse me, individual employees. Especially individual employees who have kind of bigger health needs.
So if we were to self-fund, the Murray Group would, would help facilitate the program throughout the district?
Yes.
And Hub International does not do that?
No, their, their big thing is they want us to go with this net zero where we actually try to push our people to their husband or their, their spouse's insurance.
So does this impact employees in a positive way or negative?
Um, ben, it's a huge, because benefits is what, is one of our pay packages, is the best benefits we can provide and still have money to give some kind of cost of living.
So are they losing things by?
No, no, we, our recommendation is stay exactly with who we have. But look at the self-funding. The problem with self-funding is you have to have money in the, the bank in order to do self-funding because you're the, you're the provider of the insurance in the sense of the financial piece.
How far away are we from being able to do that?
Um, Elmira has a plan that she's gonna talk about during the April budget. Kind of a one-year option and a two-year option.
And this is also a one-year contract?
Uh, with the Murray Group, yeah, we would review it every year, yes.
And this is who we already use?
Correct.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to stay with the Murray Group for the health benefits, insurance consulting services.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, Hillary? Aye. Kim?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you.
Uh, the third one is probably the most, the most, um, largest amount of savings you're gonna see upfront, but it's also probably the most sensitive because this one is gonna directly affect a group of employees. Um, we brought in some friends to help us. And to me, if you're gonna get in a relationship with a, with a company and they're willing to not only come and help present, but they, they brought their whole team and they're gonna present a little bit more, we're talking about looking at our custodial services as a contract, contracting out our custodial services. Um, other school districts in Idaho, I, I'll go away first. So Blackfoot School District is a similar size as us. Um, Ca- Casha, Burley High School, um, is the easy one. Casha School District is another district that's, I think, just a touch bigger than us. Um, they have a couple of high schools, Emmett High School, as well as Napa. Because they already have a contract and it's a state-proofed contract, we can piggyback off of that contract. So we, because of our relationship with Emmett and, and Embon, because of their great references, we, we've started just with talking to ABM. Um, and they're gonna get up here and talk in a minute and save me. But our recommendation is to, to go with this contract. Um, they, they're talking about a savings over five years and they're gonna talk about why their contract for five years makes the most sense, but then we know it's not gonna change in five years unless we screw up with overtime.
So the savings is of three hundred and fifty-seven is over five years?
No.
Per year?
That's annual. So over five years, we're talking closer to.
Right.
It'll be over a million. And then there's other things that they're gonna talk about. There, there's some things that we already own that they may, um, purchase from us that may be a difference as well. But I'm gonna hand it over so they can kind of explain, when you talk about contracting, that means these employees, forty-three to forty-six employees would not be Kuna School District employees anymore.
So what happens to our employees now?
So that, that's why I'm gonna, I'm gonna lean on them to talk a little bit about it. Cause this is why it's a little more sensitive and you're talking about people that do work for us and people we wanna take care of our employees. Um, a couple of things that I was super impressed before I handed over. Um, I, I love your story, so hopefully you tell your story a little bit. But also just that, that there was a couple of aha moments for me. Um, imagine you opened a business, large business, and you were looking to hire somebody to come clean it. Would you hire Kuna School District to come clean it? Or would you hire a custodial company to come clean it? That was one of those aha moments that I had, um, when they're talking about, you know, our job is to educate kids and to do the teaching and learning. And they talked a ton about our job is to take care of your, your people, make your people better, take, and make your buildings better. So I just, I loved that statement. It was like one of those, duh, this is, this is one of those moments. So I'm gonna hand it over quickly to you guys, so like you guys can bail me out a little bit here, but then I'll jump back.
Thank you.
Brian took on my good talking.
I know. What a good intro. Would you like a stick pick now or, uh? Do you know, it's easier for you?
Sure, sure.
Is it just this one?
Yep.
All right, thank you so much for your time this evening. Uh, at ABM, we start every meeting, every day, every shift with a moment for safety. So before we introduce ourselves, I'm actually gonna start with one of our moments for safety. Uh, this one's on inclement weather. Uh, talks about wearing proper clothing for whatever the weather allows. That could be wind, heat, rain, winter storms. And also to make sure that you're checking in with the employees as well as your supervisors, trying to go, no-go, uh, or any equipment that might be affected by that weather. So every employee that has an ABM email address gets a copy of this in their email every morning. We also start every shift when they clock in going through this. And then a lot of times our supervisors will actually walk around during the shift and give some pop quizzes if they remember the items for the moment for safety. They'll get rewards, uh, if they do remember those. So we wanted to start with this. My name's Leslie Jones. This is Logan. Uh, Logan is our regional director of operations for this area. We also have with us this evening Shane, who's our account manager in the area, and Dean Fuchs, who's our regional vice president. So this is really your operations team that would be working with you, uh, should you move to outsourcing your custodial. We also have our corporate support team, uh, that we just wanted to highlight as well, that would be interacting with this account. There's four items that we wanted to talk about tonight and we're gonna briefly touch on three of them and then really focus on one. So we're briefly gonna give you an overview of who we are, if you're not familiar with ABM. We're gonna talk about hard and soft cost savings. We're mostly gonna focus on the transition in your people because that's always the biggest concern. We wanna make sure that your people are taken care of. And then we'll end with kind of the communication. So I'm gonna kick it over to Logan to talk about who ABM is.
Yeah, so I think about ABM, one of the benefits we have is we are a large company. As you can see, not just a national company, but an international company. Over a hundred thousand employees and we do, we're here to talk about custodial, and we do a lot more of that, any facilities related. We can handle that. So that, that's exciting though. We have that strength and that bandwidth and those resources we can pull from those multiple subject matter experts that we really lean on quite heavily. But the better side of that is, was that we're Kuna. And so the next slide, which, uh, Brian talked about a little bit, was kind of your, of the local schools we've been at. We've been in Nap, we were, we've been in Napa since twenty thirteen. Um, we're about to enter hopefully our third contract with them, so they've been very pleased with the process. Um, just something to throw in there, we came in a little bit each time, so I know the cost will come up at some point. Um, also, Casha School District approached us to do free services. We do grounds, maintenance and custodial out there. They approached us about six or seven years ago. They also agreed up with us for five or years, so more than ten years ago. Emmett, we just, we just, uh, closed year two, so that's a new fresh relationship that we enjoyed quite a bit. Um, that's in Marido and like we said, we have Blackfoot as well, some other spots. And then also, um, up in Dean's next to the woods, we, you can see those, uh, start times nineteen eighty, nineteen eighty-eight. So those, again, some longstanding relationships with, uh, school districts of similar size. So those, again, some longstanding relationships with school districts of similar size. Yeah, so I think the hard savings are kind of put out front, that three hundred and fifty thousand, one point five over five years. But there's also some other, you know, things that are hard to build in and quantify. But a big part of that's the time commitment that the current leadership has. And we wanna make sure, you can see the increase that we usually bring to the table when it comes to training your employees, that's a big difference. Again, like we said, we're the subject matter experts, it's our, we've got lots of systems and programs in place. You don't have to recreate it, but we use those systems to further the training of our employees. So again, this is where a lot of cost savings comes from. Our cost per employee is significantly lower than what your guys' is right now as district employees. And then also typically we do see an increase in the quality. I will say this, when we walk to schools, you have beautiful schools. It wasn't like some we walk into, it's kind of a scary place to walk into, and if we just took the trash out, it'd be an improvement. Beautiful facilities, our goal now is to maintain that. There's a couple of things we saw from a floorwork perspective, some high dusting things, just to kind of continue to make it better. But we're not walking into a district where it's been neglected from a custodial standpoint. It's the team there, your current team is doing a good job, and our goal is to maintain that. Some of those, again, the hard savings we talked about was the five point two-three. These are the ones that are a little bit harder to quantify now, you'll see these over time. All those workers' comp claims that you're paying for, those that roll over, those become our costs, because they're our employees now. And usually after a couple of years, you start to see those savings. No more time spent recruiting, that's now our job to take over. I don't know who handles it here, but it's a significant portion of their time the last three years, recruiting and trying to retain employees. Training costs and documentation we talked about, software licensing and things, it depends on what we do. But then also an item where the unemployment aspect of all this, so we take all of that off administratively from your team. It's our job to own and run this program from top to bottom.
So briefly touching on who ABM is and touching on just kind of our presence in the area. So I wanna talk about the transition, if you choose to outsource, and what happens with the staff, right? That's always the biggest concern. So the first thing I want you to know is that your staff has the option to roll over to being ABM employees. And there's some benefits to that that we'll go through. But, you know, I think us as an operations team understands, especially with the principals and the day team, how the day cleaners are their right-hand people, and we do not wanna interrupt that relationship. They will stay in that close proximity, that close relationship together. So really what we're bringing is more management accountability to that, not necessarily interrupting any of that. So this is kind of the seven steps to our transition plan, and it starts with aligning. So the very first thing we would do is we have a transition team that comes into place. And that transition team would include HR, talent acquisition recruiters, IT, our operations team who's present today. And they're really gonna make sure that your goals and our goals are aligned, that there's clear communication on any KPIs, key performance indicators, that the standards that you have and your expectations, we all understand in every department, not just one person. From there, we move on to preparing, right? We're gonna do an inventory of equipment. One of the things that Brian had mentioned is that we can look at purchasing your equipment, so that way it puts some cash into the school district's pocket, but also helps us offset the cost of purchasing new equipment. We also will fill in the gaps by purchasing new equipment, and that helps with some efficiencies along the way as well. So starting with that preparation. The most important part of this process is to have a town hall meeting with your custodial team. We wanna make sure that they all have the same information rolled out to them, and that they have a chance to ask any questions. And so that they feel like they have a clear picture of who ABM is, their role, any of their concerns are addressed during those meetings. Then we look at onboarding. So our HR team is gonna come in and start the onboarding process, making sure that day one, they have a great ABM experience. Then we're looking at training them and engaging them, which we'll discuss in a minute. And that's really our kind of seven-step transition. So as part of that, like I said, we want to give the option for all of your current custodial team to be ABM employees. So that way they can retain their positions, we can match their skill sets. If there's something that their experience or maybe their skills would be in a better match within ABM, we're gonna look at that as well. We know that anytime that there's transition, there might be some vacancies that occur. So with that, our talent acquisition team really steps in. The nice part about this area is we have such a strong presence with so many of the school districts that we really get a lot of great referrals from other employees for positions. We also will do career days, we do online postings, any kind of robust recruiting that our team can do to make sure that those vacancies are quickly filled. The most important position that we're going to look to recruit initially is an account manager. And that account manager is really the day-to-day interaction and face with your facilities team. So they're going to make sure that they're part of the communication of any special events, any changes, any adjustments. That's really your main facilitator when it comes to your day-to-day operations. The second part to that is that when your staff comes over to ABM, because of our size, Logan had mentioned that we're about a hundred thousand employees nationally. There's a lot of career growth and management training opportunities that we can provide, that they may not find working in a school district. Just because we have a presence in different areas, aviation, work team, and other school districts that might be closer to home. There's some different options there that we can look at. One of the things that we wanted to highlight, like Brian had mentioned, is Shane who's with us. Shane started at Nampa as a custodial lead and joined in our management training program and has worked his way up to being the account manager for this area. So we wanna make sure that he was here, that he can answer any of those questions from his personal experience of seeing that career growth when he rolled over to ABM. And Logan's gonna talk about training.
Yeah, so like we kind of talked about before, we, a lot of times these decisions are driven by finance, right? Because that's the way they do it, but I think the added benefit that people really see, and you'll see through our references, is the quality does improve. A big part of that, just like teaching the students, is giving them the proper tools to succeed. And our training programs are great for that. The training goes all the way up, it's from our frontline custodians all the way through the top of the mountain. Different training programs, we have our ABM University, and we're just, from day one, we will do a whole bunch of initial training, kind of like a new employer orientation, with our hazard communication, with our bloodborne pathogens, things like that. But as you saw at the very beginning, that doesn't stop. Every day, we are training and talking about safety. We have our quarterly things we need to go over and review. There's, the training part is a big part of this, that's the actual nuts and bolts of how to clean a restroom, how to clean those spaces, but all the way up to just the daily safety, proactive approach is the thing, rather than just being reactive. So the training is, I think, the part that really sets us apart and gets us to that goal of improving your product as well, not just the cost savings.
Yeah, and Logan, to your point, one of the items that we track as a company is districts that move towards, from in-house custodial to outsourcing, see an increase of four to five attendance days per year per student. So it really helps with the attendance as well. So just wanted to end on kind of the communication. One of the first questions that we usually get asked is how does the vendor, ABM, the school district, the facility team, the account manager, how does all that communication work together? And like I said, our primary goal is to make sure that the principal and the staff relationship remains intact. So how do we enter into this relationship with you guys and make sure that that communication is open? So there's a few different ways that we do it. The first is gonna be your daily and weekly communication between the facilities team and the account manager. That's gonna be ongoing and regular. That can be done through phone, that can be done through email, it can be done through in-person. And then as we increase, we'll look at monthly and quarterly meetings, and that's with our executive team. So that would be with Logan, our regional director of operations, Dean, our VP of operations for this area. So those are gonna be sit-down meetings, and in those meetings, we really like to talk about your satisfaction and how we are meeting or not meeting your expectations. One of the tools that we use is site.
Yeah, that's our quality control program. It does quite a few things, it actually helps with some of our safety programs, safety inspections. But a big part of that is basically going through and inspecting the spaces. Again, not just sitting and waiting for someone to complain, but going through, and our managers, our supervisors, they have a quota. They got certain inspections they gotta hit. We review those scores with, like you said, the teams quarterly, monthly, depending on what it is. Sometimes, you know, weekly basis, depending on where we are with certain, you know, areas that might be troubling. But it is, it's a big part of us being proactive in our inspection program. Helps us identify our areas of strengths and weaknesses. It's huge for helping us not just correct maybe deficiency across the board for the district, like maybe it's high dusting, but also helps us work with specific individual employees, right? If their area's hitting these things continually, we can go in and work and retrain them on restroom cleaning or something like that. It's got a lot of good data, and, you know, we're all driven by data, then the analytic part of all this. So it's a phenomenal program that really sets things apart for you guys.
In addition to site, we use client surveys. So your team will receive a client survey that just asks about your satisfaction. You can rank us, you can talk about any discrepancies that you might see. And then during these monthly and these quarterly review meetings, we sit down and say, okay, we thought that we did this really well, you guys ranked us a little lower. Let's talk about how we're not meeting those expectations, right? Because the term clean can mean a variety of different things to different people. So we wanna make sure that our quality is matching your expectations, we have the same definition of what clean is. And the last item on here is just principal report cards. So similar to the client surveys for satisfaction, we wanna make sure that the principals have a voice as well. They can rank us from poor to exceptional based on a variety of different topics. All of this is customizable, so we can adjust it based on what you're looking for to make sure, again, that our version of clean, our quality, is meeting your expectations. So that's the time that we have, but we are happy to field any questions as you guys are discussing this.
I have a question. Surprise, surprise. But I was wondering, what exactly is the scope of work? Is it, what do you clean? Do you clean desks, floors, restrooms? Is it also facilities-type maintenance, or what's the scope of work?
With this particular one right now, it's just the custodial side of it, it's not the maintenance. There might be some light maintenance things, we do smaller things, but for the most part, it's just the janitorial custodial aspect. And we match the scope up with your team to make sure it's the same things that are being performed now. It's not like you're gonna get people vacuuming every other day. It's still getting, the scope you guys have now, the scope of work that we've done from the principals is gonna remain the same. So if you guys had a good clean scope, it was super easy. Some of them are a little bit funky with the requests that have been dealt with over the years.
Trusty Lo, I think one thing that we would, if this works out, this relationship works out, the next one we would like to talk about, I know Kevin is like asking me to talk about faster is grounds. Grass.
Kevin Lindquist.
Kevin Lindquist. He would, I think if this is a good relationship, which we believe it's gonna be, that would be the next thing he would ask about, is hey, what would it?
With this company?
Yeah, like similar what they're doing with Kasha with the grounds.
The one question that I have is all of our equipment. If we went with you guys, you would hopefully be buying our equipment. And I'm assuming, like if we made a decision to go with you guys, we would have some numbers on that. And we would kind of get some ideas on what that's gonna look like.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then, let's say if things went south and we didn't renew your contract, hopefully we could buy back that equipment, or, you know, what would that look like?
Yeah, so we, so during that initial transition, we would do an assessment on the equipment, a full inventory listing, and then dollar amounts associated with that. And then we can add into the contract that when the contract concludes, or either parts ways, that then we can do the same process on the exit and sell that back to you.
One thing to consider though, the useful life of a lot of quotas is basically between three to five years. So like when I ask for what you guys currently have, we go do a site by site. I didn't ask for any older than three years, because the useful life is small. Usually it turns out to be kind of a combination of the two, so purchasing some of your stuff and buying some new things. Like I said, the three fifty-seven is kind of the baseline. We do anticipate at least some initial first-time cost with the purchasing of some equipment. Also, the supply piece, we haven't had a chance to dig into yet, because that's a lot more, that takes a lot more work too. But we believe, based upon the savings we found for Nampa and other districts, if we get in here and really roll our sleeves up, we can find even more savings on your supply cost too, just by leveraging our buying power and just really bringing better options to the table too. So that's the baseline. I think that in year one, there would be more just strictly based upon the equipment purchasing, but I think over time, we can find you even more there. So it's what we do, it's what we have to do, is find those efficiencies in those areas.
When you look for new employees to work in the schools, what kind of criteria do you look for? Do you hire felons? Do you hire, do you do a background check? What's like, what's your, something that would be acceptable?
We run a background check too, which is equivalent to your state background. And so because that state background takes a while to go, we run that one. They've got to clear that, it's our platinum package, and it matches up pretty close. But at the same time, we would normally coordinate with you guys too, to get their fingerprints run as well, to make sure we keep those people filtered out. I've never had anybody, you know, eleven years doing this that's ever slipped through the cracks on my side. So it's a pretty rigid background check to start. It's not the same as what someone's getting to clean the Walmart at night or the bank. We take the education side very seriously, so.
And it's, you do the background check in the state of Idaho, but not nationally?
I do have a question, maybe you've already answered this, because it's kind of hard to hear sometimes. I am concerned about our employees that are already with the school district. Will they take a cut in pay? Are they gonna go straight across? What are some of the benefits they'll reap from this?
This is the best part.
This is the easy one. So when we calculated this, because again, our cost per employee is different, everyone's gonna be getting a raise when they come to our side. So head custodians at minimum are beginning a dollar an hour raise, their current wage rates. And then the other custodians, it's kind of, you guys are kind of all over the place with their wages, so it's hard to say flat, but a minimum five percent increase for everybody comes over our side.
So is that who like their Percy and their sick time and their vacation time, or does that kind of change?
They're no longer Percy-eligible at that point. That is the one drawback and downfall, that they didn't come over to our side with our 401K match options plus our insurance benefits. But that is, that is the one that isn't the most exciting part.
When you talk about training employees, is that certain employees, like do you pick and choose which ones you keep and which ones you don't? Or do you keep everyone?
Our goal is to keep all of them, so.
But that could not happen.
But if they're not good employees, you're gonna get rid of them, which is what we want.
Cause you check in on them too and you train them and that sort of thing?
Correct, so during that initial assessment phase, right, we're looking at their skill sets. Is it something that we can retrain? Are there adjustments that need to be made? So that's part of like that first ninety-day window when we're on board. But like Logan said, our goal is for everyone to come on board. We know in past experience, when we're outsourcing, not everyone wants to come over and be outsourced. So with that attrition, we just know that that's where our TA, our talent acquisition team, comes into play with their recruiting efforts, backfill vacancies.
So when you talk about a project management person, is that someone you pick outsourcing, or do you actually hire from the employees?
Yeah, so we like to look at both. So it's gonna be posted for either to apply. And we also like the facilities team to also interview those people, make sure that they're a cultural match, you know, for Kuna. So that way it's a joint decision, being that they interact so heavily with you, we wanna make sure that that's somebody that also matches your guys' expectations.
That it could be.
So it could be either inside or outside.
I just wanted to restate a couple of things, so I wanna like talk about the positive real quick. We know that about a five percent increase to our employees if we did this. I kind of feel like the benefits might be better with you guys. The only difference is the Percy. So my question is to Ben, how, like how many of our custodians stay long enough to really benefit for Percy?
Of late, we have pretty good retention with that, and that has been a definite draw for us, is the benefits. They've been coming from other districts. We do have probably just a handful that are probably coming to maturity with their Percy. That will be, and a few that are close to be invested. And if I understand the right director grades, they were going to help them reach that benchmark so they weren't pulled out and lose their vesting. Or is that still in conversation?
The first step was, are we doing this? And then the second step is we look at any employee that's close to retirement and close to becoming invested. And they, this is something they've worked with before, and then so we can look at different options. If there's ways to get in a month or two, if we're that close.
We're talking a month or two, not a year or two.
Yeah, because you gotta be five years employed to be vested in Percy. Percy doesn't go away, though. So once your money, that's your money, that's your retirement money. So that'll be another teaching that we give with our people, because I think a lot of our employees have heard their benefits and more as far as their retirement that they already had. That's not going away. And so Tammy will help us, Tammy's our people, explained at the end will help explain that. The Percy might as well go away, it just now will be continually added. But they'll have a 401.
But they'll have a 401K, 3BM.
I have Percy, and I'm vested with the Percy system, because I have years with Idaho Public Education. And I also have a 401K too, so. Could the Percy be rolled into the 401K with you folks?
Whoever has Percy.
I know, but Shane's shaking his head.
Yeah, yes. What you would have to do is take the cash option, because there's an option that you can take for a cash option, and you can take that and roll it into the 401K.
And after this decision, these will be our next steps with our employees, we just didn't want to.
And then Kevin, does he have his own people, or does he still use the Percy?
Completely separate right now.
Yeah.
But so, so from what I understand, so a motion, what a motion would look like tonight is a proposal to entertain this option, right? So we have a lot more work to do.
Yeah, there's three motions that we'll go to next. Yeah, there's three motions that we'll go to next if you guys are done with.
I'm done asking these guys questions, I have one for you. Okay. So my question is, what other companies have we explored?
We haven't. This was the only one we did because we didn't have to go do the bid process because they are already approved through the state. We can piggyback on their options.
And so generally it feels more responsible to compare pricing apples to apples with companies when, when bidding. I, is there another company that we can go through that process with and so that we know that we're getting a good price?
I can share some information that might be helpful on that. So with the, with the co-op that we've worked with, there's due diligence that, that has been done that you can see, you know, that's visible that they'll share. Where we produced pricing, this been competitive pricing, that will, is the same off, about pricing this offer to you. So you're able to look and see the, the due diligence that was done and the competitive pricing that was done ABM against other, other similar companies.
Yeah, like what I think was mentioned before was in the other districts, they were always below bid. So I'm looking to see if that's still the case for our district.
I, at this, I mean, we can definitely do what you guys ask, if you guys would like us to get some more bids. We've been, we've been working with ABM for about three months now to get through to this process. But we can definitely do, just to get it on that, that July one budget with.
So we do three separate actions?
I'm sorry.
Three separate actions?
Yeah.
You only need to do one.
Oh, okay.
We're just on the custodial services.
Oh, okay.
So I, I realize that we're making a motion to accept the proposal from ABM for custodial services. But there's a lot, there's a contract that would be made. So we're not, it's not like we're, if we make that motion to accept this, it's not like we're married to this right now, right?
We, they, they have a contract, no, we, we would be rolling with them for service services.
I'd like to make the motion that we make sure that we don't, that we can, can't get a better bid from someone else. Just to use the, the dollars responsibly.
Okay, before that though, is anyone comfortable with this one? Before we make a, a yes or a no?
I think it seems like a great option, but I've never been something like this previously. And I think it's usually responsible to compare this.
You don't have to make a motion on this to make it.
I'm okay to do it, but does anyone have any feedback?
Ben, what's your overall feeling from your employees?
We're just going to poke you on the spot. It's a tough, it's a tough situation for folks that because of there's a fear of the unknown. Am I going to, and, and some of, we, Brian and I have quashed that no, you're not going to lose your Percy. Because that's what they thought, the money that they'd already invested in Percy. But so I think it's just placating to some degree concerns. And there will be some that will leave because they're, they're close to be invested or they, or they've already been vested and they're going to work for other districts. But I'm sure you folks would attest to that anyway, that that's going to happen. It's, I'm kind of in a pickle, you know? I love my job, I love my people, I don't want to see them hurt, I want to see them well taken care of. You guys have been great. It's just, it's a, it's a tough place. I understand conceptually why we're looking at it, it's, it could save us a lot of money. But it is, it's, it's, it's been a, there's been a lot of emotions running high through the department right now. And I'm trying to just keep everybody intact and say, let's just, give us a chance, you know? Help us work through this to, before you make a, a rash decision to leave the district. But it is, quite frankly, it, yeah, it's been very hard on some folks. And I think part of it is information, not knowing. I was hoping more would be here tonight to maybe hear a little bit more too. But I'm, I'm even conflicted a little bit. No, no defense to you guys because you seem like a great group of people. I know how to clean, I know what clean is and my staff have learned that from me. We're really looking at more of the financial aspect of that now because we're, we're in a little bit of, of trouble financially. But as far as bringing the level of clean, I'll, I'll probably refute that because we do a great job. My staff is, they're awesome. But anyways, probably back, back to you. It's, it's a tough situation, but I'm, I want to support the district and their decision. I don't want to be in an adversarial position, certainly from you guys and your decision. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna ride the boat whichever way we go. I hope that it comes out okay.
Are there any other companies reputable like this one to even consider options?
We went, talked to our partners in the SIC that contract out. The two that did spoke nothing but great about ABM. We're looking at a timeframe of July one budget, their ninety day transition. And we went with it because their, their bids are their bid, their contract is already approved. They're the one that we could go the fastest version of this with. I know I can't get you bids by the April board meeting. If you're talking about the May board meeting, then that transition, it, it puts our staff in a little bit. I'll, I'll do whatever you guys ask, but at the same time, we were trying to find the, the most cost savings as quick as we could to get this done by July one.
Please Chairman Grant, I would just like to say, so when I was in Nampa, Shane was a custodian for me at South and then at Skyview. And this was a big, he didn't get a chance to talk too much, but so it was hard, I mean, he didn't want to do this. But where he is today, because of where he is, is, is pretty darn good. It's pretty awesome. And they have the opportunity to, to do that and I.
That's one of the things that I would like to touch on Kim is that I, I kind of felt with, when I was with Nampa and the position that I was in, I was at the top of my run completely. And being, things that there was no growth opportunity for me. If I was there, if I was to be the head custodian, less somebody retired later on, possibly that the, the position changed for that. But the opportunities that were given to me, I've had opportunities to go visit other states for startups and things like that. And it's, it's about how much you put yourself out there with those things is what really, and the, the growth that I've had, I think, I couldn't be beat with. And I was run probably beating a pretty hard drum against it in Nampa.
So give them opportunities to go and expand and have other job opportunities.
Huge opportunity.
Have we, I don't think we've seen a slide of the overall cost savings by switching over, have we?
Yeah.
It's close to four hundred.
Three hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars a year approximately.
Savings?
Almost four hundred thousand dollars.
Is, is Ben's a position that would be transferred to ABM?
They have to, they hire a, a project manager, which is called.
I know this hasn't been said, but I think there are a lot of pros to this and I actually am okay with accepting this bid and accepting this service.
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry Kristi.
I am okay with accepting this bid and accepting the service. I think there's so many pros to it that I think our school would benefit from having this service.
I agree that it would, that a service of this kind that saves us money would be a positive. I, I don't think it's responsible to take a single bid, ever.
Well, I also trust their opinion in saying that they've done multiple outlooks and met with different people and this was the best option.
But financially, they don't know how it compares, correct?
Well, I think one more question is maybe might help some information is like how many other companies are, do, do what you do at your same scale?
Yeah, we're, we're the largest nationally. So you're going to have a lot of smaller, maybe regional companies who provide this. We are the only or one of the only that have an education specific team, which is us. So all we do is K through twelve schools. And just to go back to kind of the price comparison, what Dean had mentioned is that working with a cooperative, which is what we're doing, the piggyback clause of this contract, they have already done price comparisons in multiple companies. So we're locked into the prices in there to ensure that you're getting the least expensive without having to go and through the entire process. So we can, you can pull those financials as well to do the comparison through that contract, i- if that's helpful. But the pricing that we've provided is in line with that to ensure that that's already been honored. So to answer your question, there's a lot of smaller companies, there's a lot of regional companies. But we are one of the only, if not the only, that have an education specific.
I think the sure size of ABM gives them the buying power to save us on a, a lot of different resources. And I, I mean, having that guarantee in the contract that if we can find someone that, well, as, as long as it's apples to apples, that they're guaranteeing us that they're going to do it at the most cost effective, I'd kind of lead toward using them. But I, I think we can, I think we can make a motion and put what you're saying in that motion.
That we find another bid to compare?
Yeah. I think you could, I think we could come up with something like that that would appease that point.
Can just be, but I feel like we need a money.
We're spending other people's money, so I feel like it's important to, I mean, when I, if I'm going to get a, a cleaning person for my home, I'm going to get three bids.
The only reason we didn't do three bids is exactly what they said, we didn't have to because there are.
So I don't understand how it's already been done, maybe you can help me.
This is where I really wish, I'm here to like.
Okay, so.
We could help you a little bit.
You have a motion.
Hold on.
Yeah.
I'm just saying.
I know you say that, but I actually don't agree with that. So my answer would be no, I don't want another bid.
And why don't you want another bid?
Because I'm comfortable with this one.
But, but can you explain the state, so?
I think they have a guaran, they have a guarantee that they're going to do this at the least cost of the district.
So I feel like if there's three people that say yes to this action, then we just need to accept and not make a motion to change it.
Like with the transportation with the bus, would, if it's on the state, you don't have to go out and, and get all these bids? Because if the state's already done that work, like everybody's, so they've done the bidding process. So like when we come for you with a bus, we don't have to go out and do it like we used to because the state's already done that. And so they're already approved at the state level because they've already gone out and, and done that. So that's what that means, that, I don't know if that helps.
I mean, I think it's minimally helpful.
I'm sorry, I didn't probably say it very well.
No, I understand what you're saying. I don't necessarily trust that that's the case universally, that it'll always be the cheapest, so.
Well, I'm just going to make a motion that we accept this bid as is.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of Hillary?
No.
I'll say aye. Ken?
I'll say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Still me. And then I'll be calling you guys in the morning. Uh, two second reads? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Nope, you're good, please go ahead.
Uh, this was the first, this first second read is the habitual policy, or habitual truancy policy five twenty-two. Just did blue that piece that trustee Lo spoke about a month ago, has been added and updated.
So I do have just a, like per grading period based on what? That was what I'm talking about, because previously online by hours, it'll qualify, by days it won't. So that's, that's the, so it's, I recognize per grading period, but I think that, I think that was there last time. But I think it means we need to designate whether it's by hours or by days.
So maybe we missed her here.
Yeah.
And your recommendation?
I don't care either one, as long as it's as needed, yeah.
So I'll come, this will be a third read, we'll have it updated.
What's the update going to be?
If, whether we put hours or days, I'll go back to our, our schools and get what their recommendation is.
Because you can qualify in one way and not the other.
Gotcha, that way it's consistent, perfect.
Okay, do we have a motion?
For that particular one or? Yes.
So you make a motion to accept the other one and then the motion would for that change of that policy five twenty-two?
Hold on a second, are we accepting?
Do separate ones.
Yeah, we're just doing this as a second read and then I'll, I'll bring back your update of the.
And so we're just accepting the habitual truancy, not the placement of such a second?
Yes, but we'll agree with your changes, so make sure you say that.
As a second read and then we'll bring it back to you for the third read with the correct changes, changes before it was possible.
So you'd like me to move that motion? I would like to make a motion that we accept the habitual truancy, or the second reading of policies with a change to the habitual truancy policy to designate either hours or days. Did I say it okay?
Yeah.
You have to do individual, so five twenty-two only.
Okay, for five twenty-two, we can accept that based on the addition of either hours or days to the policy.
Second. All in favor of Kristi?
Aye.
Michael, Kim?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to the second reading of policy six seventy-six.
Placement of secondary students at alternative schools, not this slide, the next slide. This area was changed. Evaluation, determination, place. A student at alternative school may be made by the district in consultation with the student's parents or guardians. That way a student couldn't be placed at IPHS as a punishment without parents' consultation. It has to be a consultation with parents.
Was that not happening before?
No, it just wasn't, this was, we, we got it corrected, so the policy was updated. Then our lawyers sent an update and, and all honesty, she was updated again. So there'll probably be some things we'll have to do for third read, but we don't know yet because we haven't read it yet. But this one sentence is different than the one you guys saw for first read. In consultation with the student's parents or guardians, seems like it goes really in line with parental rights. That's why you, you wouldn't get a letter saying your kid has been moved to a certain point without your consultation.
So if there's going to be another change, can we just kick this down the road and just push it to the next?
And this is just, all you're doing is approving second read. And I'm just telling you how it must change for the second read.
I would make a motion to accept policy six seventy-six on the second reading.
That's why we don't do changes on, we get them on Steve.
I'll second.
All in favor of Hillary?
Aye.
Aye, Kim?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Kirsty?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on to new business, consider the purchase of the forklift for the CTE program. Minister of Commerce?
It's quite warm, is there any way to? Okay.
Maybe we can open that a little bit?
I didn't know if it was just me.
No, I think she's done something.
They told me it's hot. I'm not.
I did a lot of talking and I kind of.
Brian heats it up.
I'm not usually hot.
He's going to open that door.
Great, okay, trustee Nixon, or chairman Nixon trustees, I'm back. And so, again, according to our program quality management for our trades and industries, we're, we just need things to, you know, for our, for our trades to start training in. One of the areas is that we want all of our kids in auto, diesel, construction, welding to be forklift certified. So I was able to price out through dealer Toyota lift. A brand new Toyota lift would be about fifty-one thousand dollars. This lift with seventy-three, uh, thirty-three hundred drive hours, they gave me a bid of thirty-five, seven thirty-five. I gave them my puppy dog eyes, told them that was not good enough and they brought it down to thirty. So it is a electric lift. It would be used at Swan Falls. On a side note, two weeks ago, while I was heading down to the wholesale conference in Pocatello, I got a call from our diesel teacher and he said that our current lift is dead. And so it is no longer working, so we actually do need a, a lift and, and this would be a great opportunity to do that. This is going to be due, come to added cost funding. You asked, we'll have about, we have about seventy thousand dollars left in the added cost to get us through the last two months, which I think is, is going to get us through at least one more big. we have about seventy thousand dollars left in the added cost to get us through the last two months, which I think is, is gonna get us through at least one more big project that I'd like to do to again, add to the foundation of our trades that, that again, as we were just new in those, that we just need to really build that foundation. So we'd be looking at a lift from Dylan Toyota Lift for thirty thousand. Uh, we will have five teachers trained as, um, instructors and, uh, to train kids for their certification that would last three years.
And the current lift that's dead, is that the one that was on permanent loan from Big D?
It might be, yeah.
Not, not one that we purchased, but it's?
No, one that we purchased, it's one that we've been using.
That we've been using?
We actually made an arrangement to get that, get our ag, um, forklift over there to finish the job that was done and then get it back again, so we've got one lift in each area, but we need a, we have a lift.
And just to reiterate, these are CTE state funds as well, not coming out of our butt or?
These are CTE added cost funds, yes.
Thanks for the work that you've done. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to purchase the Toyota model lift for thirty thousand dollars with CTE funds from Dylan Toyota Lift. If I have enough details.
All in favor of Kirsty?
She's not in here.
Kirsty had to leave, she had a prior commitment.
All right.
She told me, yeah.
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
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 Aye, thanks. Okay, consider allowing for the temporary access road on the district's ten acre school site within Patagonia subdivision, administrative arena.
Chairman Nixon, trustees, um, you remember back a year and a half ago, uh, Patagonia group or Taylor Merrill donated a ten acre site. Um, this is how the school would look on that site. The next slide. They're asking for an access road because due to ACHD rules and fire compliance for the subdivision, they need to access this to the subdivisions because they're developing this part and there's no access from, from Locust Grove into the subdivision, because our school would take that away. So they're asking for a temporary road that connects into this road. It would be, it has a gate on it, this one we do build, unless what we ask our architects to do is build it into the site plan uh, so that we're not doing it twice. So they will build a temporary road that goes here and when this subdivision gets built out, these houses gets built out, then the fire department and the emergency services will not need to use it to get, to get to here. So, uh, the developer, um, has been asking, he was a board, to approve a temporary access road until it is not needed when the full build out of this area is done.
So it'll be a temporary road for them to access the subdivision, but when they're done, that road will be finished, right?
If you go back to the first slide, yes and no, it's only for fire, fire emergency. So we're, we incorporated it into our site plan so that it fits and so that we don't have to do it twice, like, so that we had, we worked ahead, uh, to get architects to put the school site on there so that it can be incorporated with it. Cause if not, if we wanna say put the playground over here, the school over here, so we're kind of.
We were gonna, it doesn't change anything, correct? They're just gonna pay for the road.
Exactly.
And have access to it.
They put this gate in, they do approve it on this one.
Yeah.
Have we voted to bu- put an elementary school here?
Um, it's a ten acre site, we, we just, this is our fo- our footprint of our site that's conceptual. So no, you have not approved this concept, this is just one that could work there.
So for some reason we decide to sell this property instead of build a site, what's the ramifications, or build a school, what's the ramifications there?
We kinda can't sell this and put it in because of the agreement that was approved before that a school site has to go here.
The one, thi- this area is probably because we don't have any elementary schools on the other side of Meridian, this is probably, if we do another elementary school, this makes the most sense.
Well, and of all of our district sites, this is the most ready to go because of super capacity and the infrastructure that's there.
And what's the name of the developer?
Um, his name's Tyler, Taylor Merrill.
The one, the one thing that I just wanted to make sure is that, um, I know that there was some time involved with LKB, the architecture, so I make sure that any cross that were accrued by that time for this, if we approve this, that they would be responsible for that.
Yeah.
That has to be in the motion.
Okay, do we have, oh. I make a motion that we approve this access road and, um, any accrued expense with the architectural company would be their responsibility.
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor, Michael, Kim?
Aye.
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 Peter, thanks.
Okay, so, let's see. Moving on to the first reading, policies discussed in the policy advisory committee, Trustee Bruce and Lowe and Director Graves.
And, and again, we're, I'll go in the new way of hearing this aesthetic, remember we did it three movements instead of individually?
Yeah, please.
So there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten policies that are new for Kuna School District. And I stand for questions on any of these adopt- new adoptions, if you have any questions. And I can explain them more if you need me to.
I think for the good of those tuning in, it'd be nice to go over, um, five oh four and five oh four point five.
The, do you wanna, those, the amendments, you wanna do the adoptions first?
Oh, that's fine, sure.
This is our new try, just remember to go a little bit, not fast, cause I know everyone's loving this, but.
So six twenty-four, when I reviewed it on the agenda, previously in the policy meeting, we had talked about, um, designating a, um, a way for parents to opt out from these assessments, like the proper policy, is that in there?
I, I can address that.
Okay.
So the state law and the state rules don't allow for opting out, the language says students shall take the test. So our practice in the district is that when parents, um, say that they don't want their kids to take it, we document that, we honor it. But it's difficult to put a policy that says there's a parent adoption when the state law doesn't say there is. So our practice though is to honor that, uh, because I'm not the enforcer of state code. So when a parent says that, we simply document it and we put that in the system that parents opted for their children not to take. And then those students, the requirement is that we have to have ninety-five percent participation rate. So when those parents opt out, that counts against our ninety-five percent percentage rate. So that's why I don't wanna include it in the policy because state law doesn't allow it and it counts against our totals. But we honor the parents wishes and do that, I, I don't know if that answers your question, but that's.
Sure, is that a written practice somewhere or is that just kind of like a cultural?
It's written internally, we have that, but it's because again, it's not a state allowable, uh, practice, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, do we have a motion to adopt the following ten policies?
I can make a motion to a, adopt the following ten policies, do I have to say all the numbers?
Just the numbers.
Four forty-three, six twenty-four, six eighty point five, nine oh eight, one thousand and six, four oh five, one thousand twenty-four, one thousand forty-four, one thousand fifty-four and one thousand fifty-five.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
All in favor, Hillary? Aye, Kim?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, moving on to the amend the following policies.
Five oh four.
Yeah, if we can just go over the, what's been happening with this and the changes, I know people are interested in it, so.
So it began as a, as a, our handbook was more updated than our policy, so we got our five oh four, five oh four point five, and I'm not gonna remember the last one, but it was the, it was the second read. Anyways, so five oh four, we pushed back because there was comments in this, there was a try, remember to make it student and adult and we felt like it's in the student section, we just want it to be student. So we got rid of the teacher.
So this doesn't apply to teachers, just students?
It's just student harassment.
Under the student section? And the words sexual orientation were added or changed previously?
We eliminated.
Honestly, I've lost a little track what's going on.
Would you go back a page? It was in the definitions?
It's over on number four up there.
No, but they're not, they're not. It's not showing that, we, we eliminated all of it, so like for instance demeaning jokes, taunting, slurs, derogatory nicknames, innuendos and other negative remarks relating to the victims. So we just said, we stopped here, negative rox. And we didn't do any of this, cause we said that it doesn't matter. Let's say short people, and I was really against short people and I was saying these things, but it's allowed for short people, why? It doesn't, we're saying that you can't treat anybody that way. So the one that should be on there, should, this should all be crossed off. We took all the housing, right, we took all of the definition out and we just said you cannot do demeaning jokes, taunts, slurs to anyone.
Right, okay.
So that was our, and then the, for the policy advisory committee, we went through that. We thought that was a lot better than trying to, plus we're trying to shrink these a little bit as well.
Right, so rather than define who it is, it just means everyone.
We're telling you what you can't do instead of what you can do to some people and not others.
Right. So do you think that it's necessary to put what it's related to? Like since we're trying to, you know, cause right there, we're trying to define what taunting and slurs, but.
Yeah, shouldn't stop right here. And I wonder if we got the wrong one, it's not showing the cross out.
Right, so that's what I was just remembering is that possibly those also should be lined through still.
Absolutely. So for that second read, or do you want it to be?
I would at least like to address it, yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm not positive without looking through in specific, and I can do that, but.
Yeah. I know.
That's what I think the policy committee wanted.
Yeah, and it's nice having, like Elliot was here and Principal Tripp was here and I know these were, we, we got rid of all of that.
Yeah, overall marked through at the, the last meeting we had where you were gone, we went through this and it all worked out.
Right, so I think that would change the.
So those, that'll definitely show crossed out better for second read.
And then the bullying one, can we look at that as well?
Again, this was a policy was updated to make current their student.
And is this a similar s- situation?
They didn't have the definitions in here.
Okay. All right. I think I'm ready.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, um, accept the first reading of the following policies, five oh four, five oh four point five, six eighty, four sixty-four, six fifty-two, six seventy-seven point five, seven forty-four, one thousand, one thousand ten and one thousand fifty.
Do we have a second?
With the change to, yeah, to the harassment policy.
And we'll make sure that's a standard on the second read, so you guys can see that.
Do we have a second?
Oh, second.
All in favor, Hillary?
Aye.
Aye, Kim?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, thank you. Remove the following policies.
Maybe you would like to, you could talk about some specific.
I'll make a motion to remove the following policies, four forty-five, six eighty-six, six ninety, ten forty, four sixty-one, six sixty-two, six eighty-six, ten twenty and ten twenty-eight.
I'll second.
All in favor, Michael?
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you. Good of the order, um, ISBA training, um, open meeting laws at, um, that's five thirty on April ninth prior to the regular board meeting and ISBA get on board webinars available. Mayor's award to the youth, um, six thirty to eight three PM, April twenty-fifth, at the Boise City Hall, Council Changers Third Board.
Can I say something about good of the order?
Please.
Um, on ISBA training, I notice we, I, I'm asking for open meeting laws, but after tonight, um, and here in Hillary, maybe we need to also cover delegations and if there's anything else that you would like covered by, uh, Amy White, who's the lawyer for ISBA, would you guys please let me know?
I mean, uh, right away, I wonder if, um, proper way for items to be added to an agenda would be something I think would be good training.
Okay.
Kim, do you motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn tonight.
I second. Michael, I second it, second it, and third it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Kim?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, return, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys, for letting me, um, sit in.